Good evening, welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 29th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for that. Can I get a motion to approve the, actually, do we have any announcements for tonight?
Only if you want to announce what's going to happen.
Oh, yeah, so first of all, I'd like to announce that we have made an offer and that offer has been accepted by Kelly Roberts as for our town administrator, and she will actually be available to start work on the 5th of July. So, earlier than we had expected, so that's very exciting. So hopefully everyone will welcome Kelly into the role, and can you send out an announcement to all of the department heads to make it official?
Should we send one to the local paper?
Yeah, yeah, we need to draft a press release.
I want a comment too, so I guarantee they're going to be calling me up for a follow-up.
Yep, yep, for sure, so, but she, I don't have her resume on me, but she's got something like 20 years progressive experience, progressively increasing experience in various municipal roles, including having gone back to law school and is actually a licensed attorney in the state of Massachusetts, which is very exciting. Because that's somebody that really has both the school knowledge as well as the practical knowledge with regards to municipal. So, very excited to have her join us.
If I could just make small, and she has worked in two small communities, you know, about the size of Brookfield, and I think she'll be a very good fit here in Brookfield.
Yeah, and I can't thank the committee, the search committee enough for finding such a qualified candidate, very exciting. So I know they worked hard and dug through a lot of resumes to get to the diamonds, so that works. Any other announcements? Okay, great, so let's move into the nitty-gritty of the meeting. So the first is, can I get a motion to approve expense warrants from 6:29, 6:30 withholding warrant and a 6:30 payroll warrant?
You have that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, and just for discussion, the amounts on those warrants is, for the expense warrant from 6:29, it's $116,251.44. The withholding warrant is $79,144.45, and the payroll warrant is $128,797.40. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have selectmen minutes from 6:15 and 6:17. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
You have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next thing is, first on the formal agenda is the award of the road materials.
And I took the boiler off of the, um...
Yeah, I know you took it, you took it off the agenda.
Then you said, go ahead and put it back, you said you were going to do it anyway?
Yeah, we'll bring it back under other.
Okay, okay.
Because it was on, so people knew we were going to be talking about it. We didn't get a conclusive statement, but I think I'm comfortable with the information you provided as the contracting officer. So, the, we have our annual road materials quotes that we received from the highway, so all of the following items, do we typically read these off individually?
I don't even remember you doing the whole list.
No, we've never done it before.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so can I get a motion to accept the road materials bids as provided relative to the annual materials buy?
You have a motion for that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Wait, is there a total of what it's going to cost?
No, no, fundamentally, I mean, what it, and just for people's education, it's the, some of the items, and it's actually not that many, because there are some, there is some material here that's no bid. But, so, for a chip seal, it's like, it's $200, $2.65 a square yard for, you know, double chip seal, it's $4.85 per square yard. So it goes down with, it's basically, all of these are, you know, eligible contractors to the state, and typically that's, and that bid process is well-established. So these are all of the, this is the list of all of the lowest bids as indicated from the highway department's procurement effort, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so end-of-year transfers, we have a number of end-of-year transfers to balance out the accounts, and it looks like most of them have already been reviewed by the advisory board. So the first one, we have a year-end transfer request from fire department wages to fire department expenses of $11,500. We have an additional transfer request from police detail flagger in the highway to operator wages for $400. We have an end-of-year transfer from group insurance to the Memorial Day, and then from TV station wages to board of health expenses. And it's $260 and $880 respectively for those two items. Transfer from the general fund to the water, is that expansion account, EX account?
Expense.
Expense account, okay, for $1,400. And then we have a secondary operator wages to clerk wages for $68.32. We have a reserve fund transfer to advisory committee warrant books for, how much was it? And then the last one is full-time police wages to overtime police wages for $3,900, and full-time police wages to part-time police wages for $200.
You have that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, as a clerk, do you mind signing all of those while I go through the rest of the agenda? Awesome, dividing counter.
Oh, he's the only one of those new ones, because usually it's the three of us that used to sign them.
There's only one, there's only one, and it just says Signature of the Board of Selectmen. So I figure since it says Signature of the Board of Selectmen and we voted it, the clerk can sign it.
Yes, okay.
So I think we're covered. So, next one is the FY '22 general insurance invoice. Okay, so we've already received our insurance bill, and it starts at $108,887, but then we have a prepayment discount of $2,722, and then other credits that we have in that account for $4,410. So our net payment for our insurance this year will be $101,755. So can I get a motion to that effect?
You have that motion.
And a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do you know what we budgeted, Karen, for the general insurance?
Well, I think we budgeted $140 something, because it also, that, um, I don't know, I'm not sure. Oh, because that's from my, that doesn't include the IUD. The IUD you paid, I believe it was probably, it was $26,000 or something, and then we also needed to have a buffer.
Right, because if we have a deductible already claims.
Yeah. I want to say it was $120 or something like that. It's about, at least $15,000 buffer, now we have a little bit more because of the credits.
Okay, alright, so we are, we're going to be also, there's been a lot of negotiations back and forth between ourselves, our advisors and KP, as well as the, let's see here, let me see the company. It's Webb Brookfield Solar Company LLC. So can I get a motion to ratify the Board of Selectmen's signatures on the pilot agreement? And fundamentally, we are going to be receiving, I think it comes out to be $15,000 for each megawatt for the project, which is actually a really good rate for the town to have negotiated, so.
And when we met, we had a financial meeting this morning, and Al said, over 20 years, it's going to be $1.6 million.
Back to the town, so.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, and there's, each year is included a 1% escalator.
Yep, correct.
Okay, I will give you the motion to ratify the signature of the Board of Selectmen on the pilot solar contract.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's done.
These are all done.
Great, thank you. So next on the agenda is vacation carryovers. We have two requests to carry over. One is 32 hours from Chief Martel, and the other one is 36 hours from Karen Trainer. Can I get a motion to that effect?
You have a motion to do vacation carryovers.
Yep, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the next is our FY '22 appointments, inclusive of the most, kind of, one that is not necessarily typical, but a recommendation from our Board of Assessors is for a replacement to our Board of Assessors, which is Bruce Clark, appointed with a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Let's do that one separately.
For the assessors?
For the assessors.
No, it shouldn't, that would expire at the May election.
Oh, okay, I'm going to write that, okay.
Because he has to re, at the May election.
So that would be through, can, can somebody check real quick what the, what the first Monday in May is?
Because he'll have to run for it. Now, they didn't bring that to us, usually they're supposed to bring that to us first.
I think actually when you look, that's one of the few appointments that's not necessarily supposed to come from us, it's, it's...
Well, normally they do, if they get members from any board, they usually bring it before us for approval.
Okay.
Well, Bruce Clark came in and handed me that paper that you have before you now, that's all that.
Yeah, I mean, he did, he did request to the Board of Selectmen to get appointment.
Yep.
Oh, I hadn't, yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I would like to be considered, you brought it in yesterday.
Yeah, I talked to him yesterday too. And it's, uh, May 2nd.
It's May 2nd. Okay, so, do I have a motion to appoint Bruce Clark to the Board of Assessors?
You have that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, one of the more complicated ones is, do we have the date that Ken Cleveland was appointed?
I don't have the date now, I mean, I have to look it up, but it was, I'm going to say it was about two years ago, if I remember correctly, but I can go back and get it.
Okay.
And it was only out of necessity. It was because, I remember, because Clarence was the chairman, it was because there was a document that required that title to be signed, and we realized that we didn't have a person with that title. And so I, I remember making a phone call, I don't remember what the document was, and they said that we should appoint someone, and Clarence took the lead, we focused and pointed him.
Okay.
But there's no term ending to that, that's why you have to rescind it.
Ah, okay.
That's the only reason.
Got it, so can I get a carefully worded motion to rescind the appointment of Ken Cleveland as the environmental certifying officer and to indicate that in the future the chair or the clerk of the Conservation Commission will act in that capacity?
Okay, you have a motion to rescind the appointment of Ken Cleveland as the environmental certifying officer, and that the chair or the clerk of Conservation Commission will act in that capacity.
I will second that.
And whoever, oh, and whoever that may be at the time.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so for...
I'm sure he's signed that, so, because he, I know when he resigned, he wanted the chair.
Yep, so let me just do a, so what I'd like to do is get a high-level motion to appoint the committee members as indicated and read. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through and read what we have for appointments for this year. And then I do want to have a little bit of discussion, because I don't know if there's, depending on if there's any, anything that anybody has any questions on, to kind of treat it like we did the budget at the annual town meeting, so. Can I get a motion to accept the appointments as indicated in the, in the committee attachment?
Yes, you have a motion to accept the committee agree...
Appointments as...
Appointments as they are, the appointments that we have in this agreement that has come before us.
I'll second that.
Okay, let me read them off, and then if there's any questions, concerns, or reasons to remove them from the list, then just indicate that, okay? So the first is Agriculture Commission is to appoint Clarence Snyder until 2024. For, it's a three-year appointment for Ag Committee Alternates, Donald Haberlin and Mark Ledoux, both expiring in 2022. For Building Inspector, a three-year appointment for Jeff Taylor, ending in 2024. For Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Martin Vanish, expiring in 2024. For Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, Kevin Urcola, 2022 as the alternate. For CBDG Advisory Committee, the appointment of Bruce Clark, Ryan Point-Briand, Mary Lou Knight, and Bill Simpson, all for 2022, it's a one-year appointment. For Constable, Arthur Tatro, expiring, Tatro, I'm sorry, in 2022. For Council on the Aging, Frederica Lamonda, Nancy Mannix, Lois O'Leary, and Claire Picking, for, all for 2024 expiration. For Cultural Council, a point, a three-year appointment for Jean Linto, Barbara Wilson, Damian Sargent, Jonathan Landry, Rose Kudelski, Noreen Neifert, Jessica Clark, Noah Clark, all for 2024. Election Workers, Jane Kay, Carol LaPierre, Annette Lazili, Teresa Grubbs, Catherine Latour as Warden, Sabrina Grillo, Karen Simpson, Louise Woodard, and Sally Brown. Robert Ling, Sandra Rinald, and Geraldine Cisserasik.
Oh, she cast away.
Oh, she did, I was like, okay, thank you, I thought that that was the case. All for 2024. We've got Emergency Management Agency, Peter Martel as director, Keith Carmen as deputy director. Emergency Medical Squad, Alexis Westerback. Firefighter Officers, Lieutenant William McLeod, 2024. As firefighters, Peter Martel, Steve Budnick, Donna LaFleur, Philip Chaffey, Linda McLeod, Dan Driscoll, Matt Graves, Matt Roderick, Dave Marrow, I'm sorry, Merlo, Daniel Esser, Charles Edget, Steve Shan, Santley, Raymond Ranelloni, Ashley Marks, Michael Scott, Matthew Phillips, John Rose, Jay Haley, Micah Laird, Alexis Westerbrack, Sean Adams, and Luke Quattruselli. For Harbor, okay, I'm sorry, we're not going to do Harbor Master tonight. For Historical Commission, Louis O'Leary and Donald Fagno. Historical Public Records Committee, Linda Lincoln, Sally Brown, Brenda Metterville. Homeland Security Representative, Keith Carmen. Insurance Advisory Committee, Barbara Clancy, Sherry Gillian, Linda Lincoln, Sergeant Sean Marino, Holly Chisholm, Dennis Clark, Donna Hebert. Overseer for Board of Dispatch, Michael Blanchard. Parking Clerk Hearing Officer, Michael Siri. Personnel Board, Linda Lincoln, Holly Chisholm, and Doug Ford. We do need to find some more volunteers for that committee.
Cindy said she would stay on until July.
Okay, so do we want to add Cindy through 2022 then?
No, just till the end of July, she said.
Oh, end of this July, okay. Do we need to put that on paper, though? Let's do a slip. Okay, Reserve Officers, Serenity Allen, Brian Kibbe, Egbert Panero, Matthew Niles, Brian Sterns, Dan Driscoll, Jeremy Marshall, Angelica Rodriguez. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Robert Wald and James McNee. Quaybog Valley Community Development, did Clarence say he was going to stay on that? Because he passed a lot of that stuff off to me.
I, I don't know, I'll double-check with him when I ask. He said, he didn't tell me he didn't want to be highly appointed, but I'll double-check with him.
Yeah, let's hold that one for now, because he had, he had kind of started to hand that off to me, though. If anybody else has got bandwidth, then I'd be happy to take you up on it. Recreation Committee, Michael Warrens and Jeremy Hague for 2024. Board of Registars, with Town Clerk Lois O'Leary for 2024. Sexual Harassment Officer, Kathleen Bradley, for 2024.
We need another one.
We need someone else to step up for that, too.
We do.
We usually have a man, a man and a woman.
Right.
Have we seen her at all? I know she came in here one time when she first took it over, is she still here in town?
Yeah, I believe she is, absolutely, I mean, I sent, she's one of the ones I sent an email to.
Oh, she did, okay.
Well, she didn't say yes, it's, you know, you're going to be appointed unless you tell me otherwise. That's how we had to do it, and I didn't make it easier, and then she didn't say otherwise. So, she's still around. I don't know, we've ever, I don't think we've ever used her services, unless they had from the school, we never have.
Right.
We should have a nail polish, seems like a nano.
Well, I plan on putting out some information on the website, so I can also add that that's an opening, someone must step up to do that.
We could approach Nick, Nick likes to do enforcement, and since we've never had a complaint, it's, it's an easy one to put his name on it.
Nick, Nick, yeah, I think, yeah, he might do, he'll probably do it.
No comment. So, okay, Town Hall Improvement Committee, Carol Plum for 2024. Trench Safety Officer, Ryan Point-Briand for 2024. Wire Inspector, Scott Mansfield of 2024. Alternate, Paul Shepperson, till 2024. Zoning Board of Appeals, it's a five-year appointment. Now, was David Olson already on there?
Yes, David Olson was already on, but he had to be reappointed.
Okay. And that's through 2026.
They have five-year appointments, I don't know why, but they have, um, the...
It's like, ten, four, it's five, isn't it, too? Yeah, I didn't realize there were five.
Okay, and they currently have a vacancy, correct?
Yes.
And then alternate member is Patrick Mulhern, but have we contacted Patrick to see if he wants to be a primary member since there's a vacancy on the board?
I can't find out.
Yeah, let's verify that, because it would make more sense for him to be a primary now. Okay, Town Council, KP Law. Okay, so we have a motion, we've read those off, there's no, I think, other concerns within that slate?
The Bi-Hol Committee, I didn't reappoint any of them.
I was going to tell you, don't appoint any of them, if they were on the list, I was going to say, don't, so.
But I didn't put them on, again, with an old door shut up on the website, so we'll see what we get.
Right, and that's actually one of the things we need to talk about is, and we can, we're almost up to other. So, so we've got a motion and a second, we've read it off, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can get your rubber cramp on. I should have handed it to you while we were reading it, but probably not appropriate until we actually vote it. So under other, let's go back, we have the quote for the furnace that was approved. It was forwarded to us by the Town Hall Improvement Committee. So, our, it went out to bid, we got four quotes back. The lowest was McDonald Heating, but it was deemed invalid because they don't pay prevailing wages, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And he actually presented his, submitted his quote prior to the final specifications made ready. But the engineer did check with them, he said they're close, he's close, but it's not exactly to the spec. So with that, the committee suggested, or supported moving on to the second bidder.
Okay, so the second bidder was Tassi at $54,485. Where does that put us against the budget for that?
Bill was checking with Laurie, we have money in the furnace account that will support that difference in money.
Okay, oh, yep, I see that, yep, there's, there's going, and then it'll still leave about $5,600 debt you'll have to pay out of Town Hall Improvement. Okay, but that puts us in a decent place. So do I have a motion to accept the lowest bid of Tassi for $54,485 for the...
You have that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Can we do, that's not going to, we won't have any that come back at us for, say, hiring Mr. Tassi.
So...
That's just a question.
So it's a very legitimate question, I think, I think at the end of the day, what I'm not comfortable doing is denying him the business where it was a legitimate quote submitted in a timely manner, meeting all of the specifications, and he meets the lowest bid. We don't have, the standard reasons for us not to accept his bid would be if we had some reason, I think, that he was unreliable, that he had previously done shoddy workmanship, and none of that is true.
Oh, no, I don't have any problem with giving him the bid, but my only thing is these people that are bringing suit on the town and the planning board because of the, yeah, the business.
The suit is because of where the business is going to be, not the business or owner, yeah, or conduct of business.
But I just don't want them to find any kind of a loophole and come back with a lawsuit, and that's all.
So, so there's, there was one other bid that was very close to theirs, it's about a $1,500 difference, but it's, but we're already $8,000 over what was voted at town meeting, right? So we would go from $8,000 to $10,000 over. I think it's a legitimate concern, but I think from a, from like a, I hate to put this way, legal, ethical, and procurement perspective, I see no reason why we wouldn't accept this.
No, I, I know, he does good, we have, he does good work, and I don't have any problem with accepting him and having him do the work at all.
Yeah, and that's, and basically, we're based, we're supporting the recommendation from the Town Hall Committee. So I think, we, we ask people to serve on these committees for a reason. If we don't accept their recommendations, then it's, I don't know, I think it's a little, it would be disrespectful to them as well, yeah. So, so thank you for the work that you guys are doing with that. So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, so, that's actually one of the reasons why I have the fountain pens, is to not get the cramps for that. Okay, so we got the 2022 appointments, we have that.
We brought that up under other.
Right, we brought that up under other. We don't need the executive session because we're not prepared to, we didn't get the details ironed out on the police contract this week. Hopefully, we'll get that sorted out. Is Laurie on vacation next week?
Yes.
Is she on vaca, is she in this week or no?
No, she was in today.
She was in today.
She's in today.
She's not going to be in again.
She's not going to be in again, okay.
I mean, I might be able to email her tonight, and maybe get an answer.
Okay.
Or she takes off, what do you mean?
Um, I just need to find out if we get it all sorted out, and if there's any obligations from last year's contract that we need to fund, I think we have until the 15th to put encumbrances in place.
Yeah, until June, yeah, July 15th, yeah.
So, so we may have some last-minute encumbrances to support the police contract, so I just need her to be prepared for that. And then correspondence, I did want to, I'm sorry.
Under other, I think we had noted website, something about the website. I can't remember what it was, I just wrote website. Wait, um, I had it on other.
Go ahead and bring it up.
Um, the email system?
Yes.
Um, I believe that's supposed to.
I talked to him today and I expressed, you know, my concerns to him for one more day, two more days.
Yeah.
And he said, no worries, we're working on it behind the scenes, he's also wanting to come in tomorrow, and he expects, and I told him, I said, you know, we cannot go past the first because we're not paying that bill. And he said, no, that's fine, we'll be all in place and it's going to be Outlook.
Okay, is he?
Like I said, he's working behind the scenes, he's gonna have to come in and.
Is he gonna send out any kind of message to all the boards?
He's sending, yes, he'll be sending out notices, at least to me, and I'll pass it along to everybody.
Okay.
And I think we'll be well-served by Outlook, because.
Yeah. It's, it's the same that it was in um two thousand and three when I started using it, it has not changed.
It has not changed, so there you go.
Okay, that was my only other idea.
That was your only other, okay, fabulous.
Could I do the contract presenting?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a good point, so. Um, do you know, are we all, speaking of of um email and websites, do you, does, is he gonna have a laptop available for the town administrator?
Oh, I already talked about that, I asked her to make a list of everything she needed for software and also office supplies. By the way, I did order all the office supplies today, and I talked to Jacob yesterday about everything she needed, he's getting it all together. He said she will have it when she gets here Tuesday, because you know, Monday's a holiday, so she'll be here Tuesday, she will have the computer ready and waiting.
Okay, great, perfect.
Gotcha.
All right, um, under correspondence, we did receive, um, cause there's been a lot of questions about what's going on with um, like the issues that we've had with um getting the Board of Selectment meetings up on cable access. Um, so the, we got a note from the Chair of the Brookfield Public Access Committee. Um, fundamentally, you know, we just had a perfect storm uh occur in that they had been at the point of hiring a um studio coordinator, lost the candidate, like at the very last minute. Um, we've had a bunch of technical issues and uh they've actually approached Jacob Gorman for recommendations on how to address the issues that they were having with the hardware. Uh, and they've actually developed a two-phase plan, or actually a three-phase plan, it looks like, in order to get um back-connected, modernized, and to enhance the capabilities of what they're able to do in the studio. So, um, first phase is gonna be to repair the hardware, they've discovered that they have connectivity issues, which is why Teleview can't fix the, the balance of what's going on. Um, they're going to replace virtually all of the hardware dealing with connectivity to Charter and Spectrum um as well as um and then work with Teleview in order to get connected so that they can bring the bulletin board system back online. They're gonna be upgrading the editing equipment and software uh into user-ready condition, um, including moving from the old editing software, getting rid of all the broken and obsolete equipment, and then uh subscribing to Adobe's Creative Suite so that they have better editing capabilities. Uh, and then phase three is going to be to do an overall studio cleanup, uh, update the studio coordinator, job description, and salary ranges, and then see what kind of volunteers that they can identify. Um, and, and hopefully hire somebody for that part-time studio coordinator role. Um, looks like a solid plan, um, and um where they need to, they're enlisting some professional support, particularly on the, the computer and hardware side. Any questions?
I did um offer the Chair any assistance, since I have a background in some of that stuff.
So, um, so I think, uh, yeah, and, and I, I think that'll play the biggest role once they get the hardware stuff sorted out, and then.
Yep.
And I think the, getting to the point where they're updating the stuff to YouTube on a fairly quick basis, as well as getting it back out on the, on the cable channels, and we'll be in a, a much healthier place.
I believe at some point, um, we, looking at the technology that was listed in there, we should be able to possibly do some kind of report to, or send to the cable access while also sending possibly to YouTube Live at the same time. Cause I know there's a, there's a lot of people in town who do not have cable.
Right.
Who would have to wait till it's uploaded, so that might, might be a possibility as well.
Yeah, so that's, there's a, there's a lot of options there, once we get the, the stuff updated.
Yeah, yeah, once the technology is there, it'll, it should go pretty smooth, knockoff.
So, um, but yeah, we could, we'll get the hardware sorted out, and if anybody wants to volunteer, then we can, we can take, take their input. Okay, any other business for tonight?
No, back to it.
I have one.
Okay.
Uh, I got an email from Karen uh in reference to uh new uh office signs, and I, Karen, did you get my email?
It was, yes, it was actually from Adam.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, so, I agree, you know, we need to get some more signs, one of my questions is, the, the sign right now said Board of Selectment, and I didn't know if you wanted to consider changing to the Select Board or, you know, something, which are, that's.
That's, yeah, that's an interesting question, I've gotten that question for a long time.
I just, I just put it up there, you can answer it or ignore it, but uh, I, I provided you with the name of where I got the other sign.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted you to hear.
To have Lois order it, yes.
Yeah, what.
It's simply Town Collector.
Yeah, what brought it up for me was I saw it said Tax Collector and Town Collector, and I know there's, since that was recently changed at the uh.
And, and Town Administrator.
Yes, yep, we'll need that.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I, wouldn't, yeah, and it's um July first, we will, uh, the Tax Collector will be called the Town Collector, she will be able to collect uh monies from everyone here in the town, anybody that brings in every, except the treasurer. She can't accept anything from the treasurer, I told that today, but.
Ah, okay, yeah.
But every, and, all departments here in town, if people come in, you know, with water bills or anything like that, she can collect all of this, so, so that we don't have to turn people away if they wanna make payments.
Is the, I know there's an online payment system to pay, like your property tax and stuff like that, is the online system updated? So that she'd be able to accept everything else as well?
Yeah, right now, actually, is it property tax or is it, it's only the excise.
Excise tax, sorry.
You can pay property too, can't you? Yeah, I think you can.
I'd have to look.
I know, yeah, those.
Laura's working on doing that as well.
Right.
It's not in place right at all.
Okay, yeah, I know that you had mentioned that previously, so.
But if she's the Town Collector, would she have access to all the other online systems, if there are any, might be something to.
Yeah, right now, there are no other online systems, so that, so I think, I think the key would be identifying what it, what the expense is to stand up each department and see if their, their receipts merit that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and see which ones it's legal for us to use, cause I think right now, we use the one that's for Unibank, but I don't know if, if one of our other banking providers has something that's more cost-effective to set up.
I think when she did that, I think she, she went around and she got um some bids and different things, and Unibank was the best of all. And she did it at the time.
Cause, cause all of those generally come with some sort of fee.
Yeah, there's always, it's always something.
Uh, though, though the rev- getting the revenue quicker is, is generally worth it, so.
So her, um, she, they were getting ready the tax bills to get them sent out before July first.
Okay.
So they're working on that today.
Any other under other? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
We'll have a motion to adjourn at seven forty-five.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.